Member of Parliament for Sia Wonga constituency. This committee chair, thank you.
Thank you so much, the honourable MP for Kaumwe.
Good morning Chair, morning permanent witnesses and Namala welcome to your committee. I'm Honorable Dr Aaron Manza, Member of Parliament for Sia Wonga district.
Honorable MP for...
Thank you Chair, good morning to you, my colleagues, our permanent witnesses. CS and your team from Namala, good morning. Kalobo Pavuma is my name, I represent the good people of Sakile constituency in the Copper Belt.
Thank you, our Ebo Chair and MP for Chasifu, I want to recognize you online, can you make introductions as well?
Good morning Chair.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning Namala, are you...
It's loud and clear.
...of the committee, my name is Christopher Shaka Fuso, representing the wonderful people over Chasifu constituency in this sector. Very much Chair.
Thank you so much. Town Clerk, Council Secretary and your team, my name is Christopher Shaka Fuso. Me Tete is in the waiting room, he is unable, member for Me Tete, he is unable to participate. We will call upon him to make introduction when he is joined to the meeting. Our secretary, my name is Christopher Shaka Fuso, I represent the good man they have, Losak. We are privileged as man they have constituency hence you are welcome to... On local government account. Substantively, the vice chairperson of the committee and privileged to chair this session. I now wish to call upon you to present your memorandum on the auditor's, auditor general's report for the financial... In the twenty-three.
Chair, item number one, cause of query, that was on page three. The finding budget income and expenditure is acknowledged by management and therefore wishes to note the observations raised by the auditors and would like to submit that the underperformance was mainly in the following revenue line. One fees, the revenue line that underperformed was the abattoir meet inspection fees. The under collection was attributed to the fact that the district was hit by anthrax which caused abattoirs to be closed in order to control the spread of anthrax. The letter for the closure of abattoirs are available for verification. Secondly, on licenses, this was attributed to the fact that there was a decrease in the supply of the firearm licenses from the strongroom at the Ministry of Finance and National Planning. On the underperformed... And the collection was attributed to that, to the fact that the district was hit by anthrax where we saw abattoirs being closed and stoppage of movement of livestock in order to control the spread of anthrax. Services closed due to anthrax and, and this had affected the budget of the council. The gathered notice showing the outbreak of anthrax in the district is attached as appendix A. Action taken, management... ...implemented, which covers, reflects realistic... Estimated amounts reduced. Management wishes to plan for realistic projection... For potential outcomes and attainable in terms... We move to page G. Is a commitment and wish to submit that negative variance was mainly attributed to the high budget aspirations or ambitions which became difficult to achieve coupled with outbreak, the outbreak of anthrax already highlighted above. The action taken, management has since implemented the approved twenty-two budget estimates which was more realistic as most of the revenue stream are the estimated amounts reduced. Remedial measures, management to ensure that prepared budget estimates are more realistic. The revenue task force constituted and ensure that the revenue collectible by the local authority is collected and further enhance the efforts is exciting the community on the benefits of making payments when it's due. Further, management to constantly make sure that revenue database is kept updated and prepare quarterly reviews on budget performance in order to have insights on our collection efficiency. We move to the next item Chair, this is on page six. Cause of query, the findings of the auditor's report on deliverable targets stroke outputs review that the four programs had underperformed. Action taken, management wishes to acknowledge the observations raised by the auditors and would like to submit that the failure to collect revenue at hundred percent during the period under review had a negative impact in the implementation of programs stroke activities. Hence some deliverables or targets had underperformed. However, management has constituted the task force on revenue collection in order to enhance revenue collection. Remedial measures Chair, management to ensure that prepared budget estimates are more realistic with deliverable targets or stock outputs that are achievable. We move to the next item, same on page seven. Cause of query, the findings of the auditor...
Council secretary, you are advised to read the cause of query before you go to your response. So for example on C, you're supposed to read the issue you are being queried for and then you go to your response.
Okay Chair. Management of local government evaluation fund twenty percent for capital projects. In this regard, the council plan to implement four capital projects at a total cost of...
No, 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 no. So like C, you are being on the management of local... For capital projects, then you now read what you have stated on the cause of query.
The cause of query.
Yes. State the... Righted in board.
Okay fine, okay. Thank you Chair for that guidance. The findings of the... Mental services and council operational costs and the two approved projects had not been implemented by the council. Action, management wishes to act, observation... That during the period, local authority had challenges in... Were borrowed with the view to reimburse. However, due to competing demands in operation, at the time of the auditor's report, the local authorities are struggling. Remedial measures Chair, management to ensure that budgeted capital projects are implemented to the fullest when funds are available. Then we go on the lack of fire equip... Chair, the finding of the auditor revealed that the council did not have firefighting equipment such as... Firefighting attire. Action taken, management observations by the auditors and wish to submit that the fire section has an institutional phone which has the fire brigade phone number. However, management applied through Zamtel for a toll-free number telecommunications system and awaiting delivery. For the firefighting attire, the fire brigade only has six, which firefighters use when fighting fire outbreaks. However, a budget figure in the twenty-two five OBB budget has been provided to that effect. Part three, appendices, appendix one, audit opinion. Cause for, sorry, or remedio via sorry Chair. Management to ensure that firefighting equipment and attire are given a priority in the budgets and procure them in phases as we cannot afford to procure them at once due to the expensive nature of their attire. Then part three, appendices. Cause of query, the finding of the auditor's report on audit opinion. Action taken...
Can you read the headline for... It's not the... In the box.
Yeah, yes. Cause of query, the finding of the auditor's reports on auditing opinion. Action taken, management wishes to acknowledge the observations read by the auditors that the twenty-two financial statements had qualified opinion but wish to report that the said financial statements have now unqualified opinion after submitting them for disstatement. Appendix C provides that evidence Chair. Remedial measures, management that financial statements are... Are shown without any misstatements or error in the financial transactions to avoid having the qualified audit opinion in future. Appendix two, budget income and expenditure Chair. Cause of query, the findings of the auditor's report on budget income and expenditure or unspent amount totaling nine hundred and two thousand four hundred and ninety-eight kwacha. Action taken, management wishes to acknowledge the observations read by the auditors and would like to submit that at the time of the auditor's report, the unspent funds were committed... Abortion block and these funds were readily available. It is therefore worth mentioning that the rehabilitation of the abortion block is being implemented. Appendix D provides that evidence Chair. Remedial measures, management to ensure that approved budget estimates are implemented with required compliance levels to avoid reoccurrence of having unspent funds as budgeted. Then appendix nineteen talks about failure to provide white book for movable assets. Cause for query, the finding of the auditor's report on failure to provide white books for movable assets. Action taken Chair, management wishes to note that observations made by the auditors and would like to submit that the council initially had a balance of ten movable assets without white books which included donated movable assets who document was not in the council. However, management since... Two movable assets and the white books are attached. Remeasure, there, management to ensure... The importance of maintain... Besides create a schedule of periodic audits to ensure compliance and accuracy of asset records. Appendix twenty, failure to secure properties with title deeds. Cause of, the finding of the auditor's report on failure to secure properties with title deeds. The action taken, management wishes to acknowledge the observation made by the auditors and would like to submit that upon realization by the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development that most councils are challengers in securing properties with title deeds. The ministry requested all council to submit the list of properties in order to assist the procurement process of the title deeds which lists were accordingly submitted. Appendix F provides that evidence Chair. Remedial measures, management to ensure that it will develop a property policy which will establish procedures for acquiring and disposing of properties. Management further wishes to submit that it will implement a title deed tracking system through creation of a database or spreadsheet to monitor the status of the council property. Appendix twenty-one talks about failure to ensure motor vehicles and buildings. Cause of query Chair, the finding of the auditor, the auditor's report on failure to ensure... And build...
Yes, we've just noted that... The next one and this one, reputations. Can we go to failure to maintain council properties?
Thank you Chair. Appendix twenty-two, failure to maintain council properties. Cause of query, the audit findings reveal the failure to maintain the... Management wishes to acknowledge the observations made by the auditors and would like to submit maintenance of the council buildings have started and so far, the male and female toilets at the street center have since been renovated. Management also wishes to say that the process, including renovation of the gatehouse is ongoing and is mostly dependent on the arbitral funds. Further, management wish to submit that there is a budget line for building maintenance under the twenty-two five budget and implementation will start depending on the arbitral funds. They picked... The toilets... Showed they are in. Remedial measures, management to ensure that it makes a provision for maintenance of council buildings in subsequent budget estimates and also ensure that the budget implementation is followed and resources to be shared... Is budgeted for. Fifty-three Chair, poor management of waste. Cause of query, the finding of the auditor's report, management of... And effect. Action taken, management wishes to acknowledge the observations made by... That a request was done to the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development for assistance in this regard and was approved and the project is being handled centrally and it is at the procurement stage. Correspondence between the ministry and the council relating to a dump site is attached as appendix H. Remedial measures Chair, management to ensure that it enhances... Residents and proper waste disposal practices and involve them in waste management decision-making processes. Management will endeavor to develop a waste management plan and will create a comprehensive plan for managing waste including... Recycling. Appendix twenty-six, failure to dispose of unserviceable vehicles. Chair, the findings of the auditor's report on failure to dispose of unserviceable motor vehicles. On taken Chair, management wishes to acknowledge observations auditor and would like to submit that management... Approved item, dispose of motor vehicles and so far, a team from the province is about to come to commence correspondence between the province and ourselves at next... Management to ensure that it develops a vehicle management policy which we establish. So vehicle, regular... The right procedures. Six twenty-seven Chair, failure to maintain streetlights. Cause of query, the findings of the auditor's report... Action taken Chair, management wishes to acknowledge the observations made by the auditor and submit that at the time of the audit report, the local authority had not yet started maintenance of the streetlights. I wish to report that council has since maintained the said streetlights. Appendix J provides that evidence Chair. Remedial measures, management to ensure that installation and maintenance of streetlights is to improve on the security situation in the district. Appendix twenty-eight Chair, failure to settle statutory and other obligations. The report on failure to settle statutory and other obligations. Management wishes to acknowledge the orders made by the auditor and would like to submit that one, unless if the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development is currently conducting this... Councillors. To state that... Conducted and adjusted and confirmed by both parties. The closing balances has since been adjusted from seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven... Thousand five hundred... Number twenty-two twenty-three. On a Nima from... Going at the time of audit, thirty-eight thousand twenty-nine-seven was paid towards the debt and also council pays the current returns as and when they fall due. On a Napsa, council applied for penalty waiver from Napsa of which a total of three million eight hundred thirty-seven eight hundred and ten kwacha has been waived. Further, that is on four, further wish to submit that other institutions will be engaged in order to agree on the payment plan and negotiations on our indebtedness to them where necessary. The letter for penalty waiver is available for verification. Therefore, an amount of sixteen million and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred forty-nine is still outstanding as unsettled statutory obligations, see the table therein. Management has also made budget provision under the twenty-two five budget only dated... Eight-five thousand from... Intended to pay... And a hundred and... One five thousand... Remedial measures, management to ensure that it continues to engage these statutory bodies for affordable payment plans and also make payments on the current returns as and when they fall due. That is to prevent, you know, further accumulation of debts. Depended on, yeah, and it is dependent on the arbitral funds. In addition, appearing, appearing also to, appearing is supposed to be appearing. Appearing also to our Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development to help resolve these historical statutory debts that the local authority has failed to come out from. Appendix twenty-nine Chair, failure to settle staff obligations. Cause of query, the findings of the auditor on failure to settle staff obligations. Management... And would like... Authority has since put up a deliberate policy on staff obligations where... Nineteenth day of each month, payments to settle staff obligations are... On five budget on staff... Twenty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-eight, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, twenty-fourty-eight kwacha from which we intend to pay terminal benefits and an amount one hundred and seventy-two thousand seven forty-eight... And five hundred for other staff obligations. Our next, our appendix arrow provides that evidence Chair. On remedial measures, management to ensure that there is consistency in attending to staff obligations as and when funds permit Chair. Appendix thirty-one Chair, management of local government regulation fund. Cause of query, the finding of the auditor's report on management of local government regulation fund. Action taken, management wishes to acknowledge the observations read by the auditor and would like to submit that funds totaling to three million four hundred and forty-nine kwacha, forty-nine thousand four hundred ninety-six kwacha were meant for implementation of capital projects during the period under review. However, in view of the financial constraints experienced by the council during the period under review, they said the amount was channeled towards payment of wages and salaries. Remedial measures Chair, management to ensure that funds meant for capital projects are utilized for the intended purpose without misapplying it on other expenses as staff emoriums. In my conclusion Chair, I wish to state that saving in public service demands for total accountability on our mandates, we have been privy to execute and as management of Namala Town Council not relent in making improvements in areas that we have not known well as would be advised this honorable committee, I stop me Chair.
Thank you so much, we can start with points of concern, Honorable Singambi.
Um, Chair, thank you very much and also... Chair, I have a general... Unless, um... Namala has endeavored to, to give us reasons... The causes of the queries, for example, Chair number, page three. On the, uh, budget versus actual income. If you go to page three, you discover that under fees and charges, they have clearly explained why that particular budget line did not perform. And it's clear because they are saying the revenue line that underperformed was the abattoir inspection fees and the reason was because of the, 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 uh, the, it attribute, yeah, this was the result of the, the closure of maybe animal movement due to anthrax. But Chair, when you come to the rest of the queries, just at page six. Cause of the query, the finding of the auditor's report on delivery, deliverables, targets, output reviewed that four programs had underperformed. So you go through all the pages Chair, you go to page G. Page seven, they are telling us, the auditor. What cause? A question to be precise. We go to page eight. Uh, only lack of fire equipment. You have said that the finding of the auditor revealed that the council did not have firefighting equipment and such, as such communication system had, sorry, as communication system and firefighting attire. So we want to know what are the reasons for these things to happen? Is it because Namala has no money or have just decided to ignore? And this Chair goes all the way up to the end, you come to page G, ten. The budget finding of auditor report on but, the, the finding of the auditor general's report on budget income and expenditure on unspent amount totaling to nine hundred and two. So what are the reasons? So this Chair goes up to the end, so for me, I have difficulties to interrogate because we've not been taught the causes of these queries.
Thank you so much for that observation, Honorable Kalobo.
Thank you very much Chair. I take Honorable Singambi's submissions as mine. And let me take the committee to page seven. On the management of the correlation fund. On the cause of query. CS, CS you have told us that the findings of the auditor general on amounts totaling to three hundred and... Or maybe, let me go up Chair, so that we qualify this properly. Your statement just below the table. Your statement just below the table says, although the council had a total amount of three million two hundred and ninety-three to spend on capital projects using local government correlation funds, amounts totaling to three hundred and seventy-eight and forty-seven kwacha were misapplied on payment of salaries and the council operational costs leaving a balance of two point nine million. You have not attached any evidence here. Or even a bank statement showing that the balance of two million was there, you only misapplied three hundred and seventy-eight forty-seven thousand. The same thing goes on the correlation, goes to page eighteen. You have said the financial constraints experienced by the, during the period under review. They said the amount was channeled towards payments of, this is the same amount you are talking about. On the other side, you paid back three hundred and seventy-eight, or you only... On the other side, you paid back 378 or you only misapplied 378, which you have not paid back. Here you are stating the round channel this document chair has got no on the unspent funds amounting to 900 and 1000 quacha, 498. You have referred to appendix D as where your evidences that you committed these funds and the abusion block has commenced. Your evidence has got bank transfer, one 3,500 quacha, another one 4,000 quacha, which you have put every as against 902,000. Where is the DF? So the transfer of 7,500 dis-evidence against 902,000 quacha. Chair, you can check all the pages submission, there is nothing, completely nothing. They are not even when they intended to even pay, no, no plan whatsoever stated here. Meaning even the next equalization will just be channelled towards, towards the salaries and personal remuneration. And it will go like that. So CS and your team, you knew that this is a committee. Why did you choose before from Namala, wasting taxpayers' money? That already have misapplied funds and you go further again, you are spending taxpayers' money there without bringing proof before this committee. Thank you, Chair.
Honorable Dr. Manza.
Uh, so I think I take all the submissions by the two honorable members as my own. Uh, I can go further to, to highlight. It seems Namala forgot the original submission, I think so, because query evidence does not speak to, to the queries, just like what Honorable Pavima, very simple on 10. On page 10, so you are supposed to account for 902,499. And then we are referred to appendix D. Uh, appendix D, uh, the details of payment for 35 is for demolition and fitting of toilet pan. And then the next one is, is tiles for the civic center, tiles for the civic center. Appendix on an abduction block. So please, I think, uh, if you look at page seven, it's a similar story where you, you are asked to uh, in that year under review, they planned to implement four capital projects and the only thing show is the table, the total cost, 1 million uh, there's had not been implemented, no, to any to explain how we're just looking at the next.
Thank you so much, Honorable Malunde, I want to comment. So council secretary, have you taken note of the concerns by the honorable members of the
Yes, Chair. I'm, I'm a place of the effect. All the assessments, they are not evidence systems yet. Also, we are, the evidence is not available because if we go from item one to all these are advertised enough evidence. Maybe again on the 378 implication is that you do not have the coffers. So even if we, there are evidence that we advertised here is that we have actually commenced doing some what we are owing.
So paper used government realization projects. What are you telling the committee regarding that, that board, man?
Yes, Chair.
What is your response? For responded on, on the last query.
Finding of the auditor on failure to settle staff obligations. Oh, okay. Appendix 31. The finding of the auditor's report on management of the local government organization funds. And would like and million 4,046 view of the financial constraints experienced by council during the period under review, they say the amount was channeled towards payment of wages and salaries. Remedial measures, management to ensure that funds meant for capital projects for the intended purpose without misapplying on other, on other expenditures as staff emoluments.
Are you satisfied with this response to this?
I think on one chair, I wish to apologize most sincerely. I think we did not
Uh, council secretary kindly excuse us with your team. I will call you in shortly.
Good morning, everyone still watching Parliament TV February 25. Right now, business in the committee has been spent as the committee has to deliberate. So we expect that business in the committee will continue. Just to mention that the council secretary for Namala Town Council is the witness appearing before the committee. And if you've just tuned in, I'd like to say that we're indeed broadcasting live deliberations on the report of the auditor general on the audit of their Namala Town Council is the witness appearing before the committee. So the committee has suspended its business. We expect to continue showing you live deliberations that are taking place as soon as as resumes. So stay tuned to Parliament TV as we continue bringing Parliament closer to you. Just to mention that there are many other committees that are sitting, we have the committee and do have other say the committee on national security. Those are some of the committees, among many others that hope that time to listen in as we rebroadcast some of these deliberations that take committees. Are broadcasting to you live deliberations local accounts. Thank you very appreciate that. The time is 10:26. We can only encourage you and urge you to indeed stay tuned, stay locked onto Parliament TV as we wait for the deliberations in the committee of local government accounts to continue. For now, we'll leave you with some messages and we hope that you stay tuned and stay locked on to Parliament TV.
Here is an announcement from the Office of the Clerk of the National Assembly. The fourth session of the 13th National Assembly, which adjourns in a day on the 6th of December 2024, resume on Tuesday, 11th February 2025 at 14:30 hours. All members of parliament are required to be in Lusaka by Monday, 10th February 2025. Here is an announcement from the Office of the Clerk of the the 13th which adjourns in a day on the 6th of December 2024, resume on Tuesday, 11th February at 14:30. All members of parliament are required to be in Lusaka by Monday, 10th February 2025.
Our honour, the vice president's question time. Questions for oral understanding of 76.
It's matter to be admitted, it has to be of recent occurrence.
Continue watching Parliament TV, a channel dedicated to bring Parliament closer to you.
Explore and experience the magnificence that is Zambia. A thrill-seeming paradise blessed with some of the most breathtaking adrenaline activities on earth. Water rafting to bungee jumps and set your inner superhero free. If being up close and personal with nature is more to your liking, then we have just the thing for you. Get to interact with the big five in natural habitat. Fine whining and dining, we hear you say? Say no more. Free choice with culinary suit each and every palette. And then there's the nightlife. Grab a drink, surrender yourself to the ebbs and croaks of an irresistible and get ready to dance the night. All in the company of the friends ever meet. Immerse yourself in the rich culture, movements, colors, pulse, rhythm and energy that make up the unique fabric of Zambian society. Be sure to acquire a piece of exceptional Zambian craftsmanship and artistry to remind you of your stay. Track in Zambia's history by visiting one of our numerous museums. So whether it is supremely fitted conferencing facilities, accommodation and amenities, wondrous water bodies or undisturbed nature. This is your best destination. Zambia, let's explore.
10:34 time on Parliament TV and in a short while we do cross back to the committee where we expect the town council secretary for Namala Town Council to continue making his submission to the committee on local government accounts. If you've just tuned in, be reminded that Parliament TV is showing live deliberations in the committee on local government accounts, stay tuned.
After the celebrations, you need to excuse that. He is actually very disappointed in the manner you presented your report. Uh, we are an evidenced based committee. This is an audit committee and this is not the first time witness that you are appearing this before, before this committee. What we expect for every query that you must respond. This is why you have cause of the query, action taken, what action? Corrective action, remedy action? The local authority is this query. And for these queries to be closed, they to the satisfaction. Other To the treasury and he responds to us through the treasury. If. Again. Be closed until you respond. As note, it's a fair attitude. Responses to these queries. For example. Excited. Did as. Thirty as. And explain we've spent on this, spent on this, spent on this. And then you put a ledger of expenses. Sure. The evidence that actually this has been spent on this. And if there's any balance, you also indicate this is what is remaining. I think what you have given the committee as a appendix D. You've given us a payment. And four thousand quads against a query. This. Take this committee seriously. Management of equalization funds is another example. You misapplied. Three billion quads. The law requires that. This money. Projects. Take during this financial year. What is your response? This money. Local government equalization and the law only. Because. If they will give up to the twenty percent, you were spending everything on salaries, denying services to the people of Namala. But here you are, you budget to implement projects for them and without limos, you spend this money on yourselves without any services to us the people. And there is no commitment in your response whatsoever to indicate that you would. This committee. In other instances, you've attached payment vouchers. We have noted that these payment vouchers were not even checked by the internal audit. You back to look at all the queries. We are not satisfied with all the responses that you have given in the whole. Secretary. How you proceed, but we expect that. Point to the queries by the report of the auditor general. As we, as you were outside, we are also. And so we are also making an appeal to the Ministry of. Finance. That we should have a secret. Directors and officers who do not attach to the work of the auditor. Councillors that will be sent away for not responding adequately, not provide evidence to queries before this committee when they are required to come back as counsel. To the second. A report if they are required to come back because they. News that they will be creating, which is unacceptable. So CS, we expect. Doctor General, seriously, you are a. Is responses. You heard the honourable member lamenting that you actually had forgotten an original copy because you were with us even last last year, but this is not how you responded to the queries. So with that said, I now wish to remove the immunity that was conferred upon you and what you say beyond this. The secretary to actually give you a date on which you reappear. Who not such responses even as you are paying, you are free to take leave.
On local government accounts. Of course, I started to note that the council secretary and his delegation. To go back to Namala and really. The responses that were given to those queries that the committee had. And the chairperson there did indicate that indeed the committee does expect better, better responses to the queries that the committee had and he did actually emphasize that the committee is actually very serious and it takes it looks at evidence. So for whatever queries that the committee has, it expects that the council secretary and his delegation will give proper responses. And he did say that the committee actually did notice a laser fair attitude and did really, really emphasize that they should relook at some of the responses that were given and that it will be when the council expected to indeed. To the. Start its deliberations. With the council secretary indeed coming in, but at some point they were asked to indeed leave. That they can, the committee can actually really deliberate. And after coming back, the chairperson did indicate that the committee agreed that the council secretary and his delegation be sent back so that they come back at a later date. And he did say that a date will be given. So that is what happened. Later on, we do expect the council secretary for Kalomo Town Council to make a submission to. Of the accounts of local authorities for the financial year thirty first December twenty twenty three. Talifeli listening over with you, of course, colleague Jason Nunda who is a sign language interpreter.
My eParliament mobile application. Dot the. Playstore. Step one. So know that's your name. E and date of birth. Two. And home address. See. A. Step six, sign in using your phone number to the four digit PIN. And step seven, create your submission and submit. My eParliament, bringing Parliament closer to you.
Why twenty twenty four is very exciting is that this founding father, this son of the soil. Would have taken two years to.
Once again, allow me to repeat our thankfulness to His Excellency the President, you and to the government for the commitment to Dr. Kounda's legacy.
And may the renaming of KK, Leungekas Motu KK serve as a befitting tribute to his exemplary life and enduring legacy of One Zambia, One Nation. And today we call it One Zambia, One Nation, One People.
My eParliament mobile application. My eParliament is a mobile application developed by the National Assembly of Zambia in order to bring Parliament closer to you. You can download and install my eParliament from App Store or Play Store. Once installed, you can raise your concerns, provide your input, opinion and feedback on various projects or decisions being made in your constituency. On my eParliament mobile application, you can listen to Parliament Radio. You will have access to parliamentary documents such as bills and acts which are considered in Parliament. You also have access to National Assembly's social media platforms such as Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. You can also watch parliamentary debates live on our YouTube channel. Download my eParliament now. My ePar.
God in me, Samati, Simsenja, Tulotana, Ninkuja, Kinumuli, Emwe Uja, Mavuzano, Ziri Pompacha. Ota Kukwafuna, Anjupacha, Gati Mnachitira, Kare Rija, Mkachi Simucha.